I'm. Recording in progress. Okay, I'm going to suggest that your select board chairs open up the meeting officially and then I can walk us through a round of introductions.
Thank you, Jen. This is Bob Weinstein. I'm the vice chair of the Truro Select Board. I would like to welcome members of the Provincetown Select Board and their water department. I'm not going to try and name all the people, but I'm going to begin by introducing the members of Truro's Select Board. To my right is Stephanie Ryan, Susan Gerard Erwin, and Nancy Madoff. Sue Arison is our chair, and she is currently out of the country. I'd also like to welcome members of the public, and I'm not going to try and name our department heads that are here, other members of rural community, and I'd also like to welcome the citizens. I'm going to read the announcement for this meeting, and I would remind both boards from Provincetown that you have a quorum, so you have to individually introduce the Select Board and members of the Water Board. Truro's. Truro Select Board Joint Hybrid Meeting with Provincetown Select Board, Monday, September 30th, 2024. It's listed as 5:30. It's now 5:35 at the Truro Community Center, Seventh Standish Way, North Truro. The phone number here is 1-305-224-1968. The meeting ID number is 871-478-02283. This will be a hybrid in-person and remote meeting. Citizens can view the meeting on Channel 8 in Truro and on the web on Truro TV, Channel 8. The button under Helpful Links on the homepage, Town of Truro website. Click on the green watch button in the upper right of the page. To provide comment during the meeting, please call in at 1-305-224-1968 and enter the following access code when prompted, 871-478-02283. Or you may join the meeting from a computer, tablet, or smartphone by entering the following URL into your web browser, https://us02web.zoom.us/i/87147802283. Please note, there may be a slight delay between 15 and 30 seconds between the meeting and the live stream and television broadcast. If you're watching the meeting and calling in, please lower the volume on your computer or television during public comments so that you may be heard clearly. We ask that you identify yourselves when calling in to help us manage multiple callers effectively. The agenda for this meeting, number one, is opening by both Select Boards and the WSB introductions, then a review of the meeting purpose and procedure, a PowerPoint 20-minute presentation, question and answer, discussion with the Select Board, and the WSB public comment, then motions and votes, next meeting dates, and then adjourn. Again, I welcome everyone. And I'm going to turn it over to Leslie Sandberg, the Chair of the Provincetown Select Board, and I'd like to welcome you and your members. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Chair Weinstein. We're delighted to be here. I'm to our neighboring town of Truro. I want to say hello to all the Select Board members, all the staff from Truro, and those members of the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm Leslie Sandberg. I am acting chair tonight. Unfortunately, our Chair and Vice Chair have been, have excused absences. I'd like to start out with welcoming and also introducing my fellow Select Board members, Eric Borg to my left, and then to my far-left, Austin Miller. Also, I'd like to introduce on my right Assistant Town Manager Dan Ravello, and then Town Manager Alex Morse. I want to also introduce Chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission, Robert O'Malley, who's a Provincetown resident. I do not know if anyone else is here virtually. If you're here, let me know. All right, and then I just wanted to take a moment to thank and introduce Cody Salisbury, our Water Superintendent, Jim Vincent, our Department of Public Works Director, Tim Famulari from our staff, who is our Community Development Director. He's sitting behind you, and Thaddeus Sewell, who is our Town Planner. We're very happy to be here. We welcome everyone who's here virtually and also in the room, and we look forward to a productive meeting. Thank you all.
Hi, I'm Bob O'Malley, the Chairman of the Provincetown Water and Sewer Board, and I'd like to call the Board to order, and I'll do the roll call of our members present. Bob O'Malley is present. Nancy Madoff, who also is a Truro Selectman, is a member of our board, is present. Courtney Warren is our Vice Chair, and she's present, as is Tracy Rose. Thank you.
I would like to also welcome and note that we are joined by our Town Manager Darren Tangeman and our Assistant Town Manager Kelly Clark. As I said at the outset, I'm not going to try and name everyone in the room. Again, welcome to everybody.
You have covered a lot of ground. So those are the Select Board members of both towns, the Water Sewer Board, and some, at least some of the town staff that are in the room. I'm wondering if there is, this may be duplicating territory, but the members of the Joint Water Resource Working Group, is this a good time for you to identify yourselves?
Thank you, Jericho. We're all DPW Director.
Emily Beebe, Health and Conservation Agent.
Jim Vincent, DPW Director, Provincetown.
Cody Salisbury, Provincetown Water Superintendent.
Tim Famulari, Provincetown Community Development Director.
And Thaddeus Sewell, Town Planner.
Welcome, everybody. So my name is Jennifer Nowor, and I believe that, I'm surprised how quickly that happened, but I think that is the introduction of all the various groups who are in the room. I know I'm a new entity to you, so let me take a second just to introduce myself, and then we can get into the territory of the day. So I am a professional mediator and facilitator hailing from actually Jericho, Vermont, and I'm an impartial player in this mix. My expertise is in managing complex conversations, actually not public water systems. So I'll be managing time and helping pace the conversation, be taking notes on the shared screen during segments of this conversation, so that you have a summary, all of you in this room. I'll be sharing that summary with you via your town staff and the Joint Water Resource Working Group. So you may hear me interrupt and jump in from time to time as this conversation unfolds, and that's to ensure that you're covering the territory you need to cover during this meeting and tending to time, and also because I want to make sure that I actually capture the input that you're providing and to help balance participation among all the different members who are in the room. So we'll review the agenda in a moment, but first I want to echo that warm welcome to members of the public. Thank you for your attention tonight. And one of the things you'll hear me do in this conversation is really differentiate when conversation is between the Select Board members and then when there is open for public comment, which can come in, I understand, either via the phone or via the microphone. And so there will be a dedicated time for public comment. It's after the Select Board discussion, and I anticipate that to happen around 7 o'clock. I'm preparing to move on to the agenda review now unless anyone, unless I've missed any important detail. I'll need to chime in if so. Thanks for the visual. I don't see any waving hands, so I'm going to go ahead and just very quickly sketch over the agenda that was already reviewed at the top of the evening. So we'll begin with about a 20-minute presentation and general info. I'm going to ask you if you have questions to jot them down for yourself, and then we'll batch question and answer towards the end of that presentation. That will be followed by about 60 minutes of discussion to clarify what the Select Board members are paying attention to and wondering about. I will be during this particular segment really prioritizing considerations from the Select Board members and jotting down notes as we go again on that shared screen. Essentially, this becomes a list of the things that you're hoping to figure out, or the things you may need more information about as part of this planning process. Heads up that you probably won't resolve a lot of those questions this evening, but that's okay. Staff and the working group members are available to answer clarifying questions tonight, and they're tending to the finer details and ambiguities that emerge in this conversation. They'll be tending to those in the weeks and months that come. I've budgeted about 15 minutes for public comment, scheduled after that Select Board conversation. Each speaker is likely to have a set amount of time. We'll determine how much when we see how many people are interested in commenting. Wrap-up activities include any motions and votes, if applicable, next steps, and how to stay updated in between meetings if you're interested in doing so. So my suggested timeline, we're going to aim to adjourn at 7:30, depending on if that's still appropriate as you go along. Logistics for our hybrid space, you've already taken care of this. At this point, I'm going to ask members of the public to, it doesn't look like any of your videos are on right now, so that's okay. I'm going to need some help from folks in the room about who's wanting to speak when, because your thumbnail is pretty small. So don't hesitate to give me an audio view if I'm missing a visual one. Let's see, what have I forgotten before we get into the mix here? I do want to reiterate that the goal for today is to provide a foundation of information and gather the emerging questions. This is a complex topic ahead of you and a long process, and we'll wrap up the meeting with ways to stay informed as part of, that'll happen as part of next steps. But just in case you are a member of the public logging in now and leave, need to leave early, I just want to cite the Joint Water Resource Working Group's Resources webpage will be a source of information for you if you need to catch up on what you missed. I'm preparing now to shift gears to your next agenda item, and I believe that is to Jim Vincent, the DPW Director, and Cody Salisbury, the Water Superintendent, for a bit of presentation and information. Jim and Cody, I'm going to pass the baton to you.
Thank you, Jen. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. I just wanted to say a couple of things on behalf of the Joint Water Resources Working Group that we're really, spent a lot of time in the last few months trying to cobble together a process for this. And so as Jen said, this is really just a beginning conversation. It's meant to be an introduction and really to figure out, okay, what are the big questions out there? And then the working group will take those over the next few months, and then we'll dig a little deeper and re-present information over the coming months at the water, monthly Water and Sewer Boards, Town Manager reports and packets, and on looking on the Joint Water Resource site on both of our town websites. So just, this is, I know that you've got a lot of information in front of you. If you, did everybody have time to look through all those packets and every deep, every report, every legal and technical report? Impossible. It's a lot of stuff, and we're expecting some help focusing in on what, what questions you have. So I'm going to let Cody take it away, and then we'll, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening. And so I can just share my screen, can we? Shows on mine, can you?
We're not seeing your screen yet.
Yep, I think we just have a slight technical difficulty. Looks online. I'm not sure if my presentation.
Yeah, it's, it just, if you make it out of that, so maybe you'll back to your screen. I think you just need to share.
Oh, there we go. All right, so it looks like there's a small delay. So there's some familiar faces here from several months ago when Emily Beebe and myself, we gave a small presentation at the Truro Public Library to the Truro Climate Action Committee. So some of these slides may be familiar to you because we presented them there as well. I think, as Jim pointed to, there is a lot of information before us, so it's good to rehash some of these and get a really good understanding as to some of the history here and the way this system currently is to this day. So this was the title that we presented at that meeting, and that's a look at the outermost public water supply on Cape Cod. So some of the bullet points we're going to hit on tonight is the history of the system and key legislative dates, the water system at a glance, locations of our existing sources, the zone twos of those sources, our current water treatment, our sampling schedule, the intermunicipal agreement, the Water and Sewer Board, and the future of the water system. We showed this slide that night at the Truro Action Committee. I think it's a good one. It's hard to read on this screen because the print is so small. I would encourage you to take a look at it in your packet if you can. We hit on some of the major milestones for the system here, beginning back in 1892, when Provincetown voted at town meeting to develop a water system. That was the Acts of 1889, Chapter 276, to establish a public water system in Provincetown. That next bullet is the Acts of 1907, Chapter 483, which authorized Provincetown to establish a water supply well in Truro, and that was through an eminent domain, domain land-taking, which is known as the Knolls Crossing site currently. In 1931, there was a distribution system study, and at that time, it recommended the construction of a 1 million gallon steel standpipe that was later constructed in 1936. Some of you may recall that standpipe still standing on Winslow Street. We demolished that tank about 12 years ago now. It had served its useful life cycle, and we took that down, but that was that tank that we're speaking to. The Acts of 1952, Chapter 439, authorized Provincetown for land takings to establish more wells in Truro, and that was the South Hollow Road Well Field. In 1964, we constructed the Mount Gilberta Tank. 10 years later, in 1976, that next bullet is the Winslow Two Tank that stands behind the Veterans Memorial Community Center on Winslow Street. In 1978, we had a catastrophe to the system, which was the gasoline contamination on South Hollow Road. Some of you may recall that scenario that was from a leaking underground fuel tank across the street at a, at a service station. That's when Provincetown Water Department became acutely aware of our limited supply during the peak season. Therefore, in 1980 and 81, we began using the Cape Cod National Seashore Wells seasonally, and we continued to do so throughout several decades as we sought a new well supply. That next elongated bullet shows that through the 1980s and 2000s, we were seeking an alternative supply. In 2011, as I mentioned, we took that steel standpipe down. And in 2013 is when we finally came online with the North Union Field Site. There was many, many investigations leading up to that, and we worked collectively with the town of Truro to secure that at the North Union Field Site, which is located behind the high school, essentially, the middle school. In 2013, we finished up the Knolls Crossing Membrane Filtration Facility. And in present day, here we are this evening, looking to the future, talking about future water supply and where that might be located. The system at a glance, this slide is familiar to some. We've shown this many times, but it's good background information on how we're, how we're set up currently. We maintain three well supplies in Truro. It's technically four because the North Union Field Site has two wells. Both of those wells are independently, an independent source with Mass DEP, but for the purpose of this, we call them three sources. So there's the Knolls Crossing Well Field consisting of three gravel-packed wells. We have the Paul Daley Well Field, which is six active wells, and again, the North Union Site with two gravel-packed wells. We are a distribution grade three and treatment grade two system with Mass DEP. We have two water treatment facilities. We have the membrane facility at Knolls Crossing, and we have a 734,000 gallon a day corrosion control facility on South Hollow Road that's treating the North Union Site. Water distribution system, this is a little light. We're up just under 50 miles of main now, but this is a borrowed slide that I've had in many presentations, so we'll update that for the future. But 45 to 50 miles of water main. We have one booster pump station on South Hollow Road, two water storage facilities. We have just under 300 hydrants, about 1,000 gate valves, and that slide is, or this bottom number is slightly off, too. We have just under 4,100 accounts total. We'll get into that in a later slide. This is the current system layout. As you can see, the system begins in Truro with the terminus being at the middle school. That's the terminus of the system. These, these outlined green shaded areas are the zone twos of the well sites, and we extended that further south at Zone Two area once the North Union Field Site came online. Heads all the way down Route 6A to Provincetown, where we do have a long spur headed out to Race Point as well. Our current asset value, I think this is, this is underestimated, and conservative number is over 200 million to build the system the way it's constructed today. So we get into the Cape Cod Aquifer. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, we are considered a sole-source aquifer by the definition of the EPA. It's a highly permeable aquifer. Deposits make the Cape Cod Aquifer one of the most productive groundwater systems, but with that, it also means it's highly susceptible to contamination from development and land uses within watershed areas. This is a good slide borrowed from the Cape Cod Commission. Does not show well here on this projector, but this, this delineates the, the different lenses throughout the Cape. You can see the Sagamore Lens, Montemoyn Lens, and all of our sources are out here in the Pammett Lens, which if we could see, would show some, some yellow area in here, which is where our wells are concentrated. In this slide, this is taken from a 2004 USGS report that illustrates the interaction between the saltwater and freshwater interface. So the freshwater aquifer that we're withdrawing our public drinking water from sits on top of that denser saltwater. And what we're illustrating in this slide is that we have to be cognizant of saltwater upconing. You can see the one on the far left would be similar to Knolls Crossing, how it's closer to the bay, and the Paul Daley would be the center well. And depending on, you know, pumping rates and so on, we have to be careful of that saltwater intrusion. This is a slide Emily provided during that presentation that shows in red the various parcels that the town of Provincetown owns within Truro. So we can see this radius parcel to the south down here is our, that's the portion that Provincetown owns as part of the Zone One area to the North Union Field Site. The middle, the one in the middle, is all on South Hollow Road in a small parcel off of Route 6. And I zoomed in on this one to show the Knolls Crossing Well Site. This table outlines our various well sources and associated pumping capacity. So to go through this briefly, we have the six active wells at Paul Daley Well Field. We have a max daily withdrawal of 864,000 gallons a day. That's a safe yield number based on saltwater upconing and so on. Same with Knolls Crossing, 216,000 a day is our safe yield there. Both well one and two at North Union is a max daily of 734,000, and the two emergency sources on the former Air Force Base, Wells Four and Five, we were permitted for 334,000 a day out of that site. We have not operated that site in over 11 years. So with all of those sources combined, our water management permit is an annual average 850,000 gallons per day, daily average, for the annual 311.6 million. The compliance regulation you see on the right, water man, all new sources nowadays are, are permitted sources through the Water Management Act program. Previously, the Knolls Crossing and Paul Daley Site were a Water Management Act registration, and that was a process that was in the 1980s when the town would register an average volume over, I believe it was five-year period. So that's how the town arrived at 850,000, and with the addition of the North Union Field, that did not allow any additional pumping capacity. This slide has been shown on many presentations, illustrate the seasonal variation that we experience. You can see that in January and February, and again, in the shoulder seasons, October through December, we taper off, but we, we're pretty predictable for the most part in May through September with our peak pumping periods. This shows a little better on the Zone Two areas. You can see we point to the Knolls Crossing Well Field, and that's the Zone Two. In the South Hollow and the North Union and the North Truro Air Force Base all merged together in the south, and the definition is there. So for those of you that don't know, the Zone Two is an area of an aquifer which contributes water to a well under the most severe pumping and recharge conditions that can be reasonably anticipated. So 180 days of pumping at safe yield with no recharge. Obviously, we, we take a look at drought numbers and so on with the state, if there's drought declarations, but that's when we get into really looking at these Zone Two areas and what land uses and so on are going on, because in air, in times of sustained drought, we can, we can have impacts due to sustained, you know, periods of time with drought. With that being said, there is a water protection overlay district in Truro. This is an old zoning bylaw. I'm not sure the exact date this was, this was passed in Truro, but this is the definition of the resource overlay district, and it outlines a certain, it outlines some things that should be done in that overlay district, such as use restrictions, site design requirements for runoff, and the primary purpose is to protect the water supply. We get into our water quality sampling schedule. We sample for a host of different contaminants as a public water supply through Mass DEP. They outline very specific schedules for us on, on many different contaminants. So these are just a number of those that's, that we sample for. I do note, I did not include, yes, I did include PFAS 6. I get a lot of questions as we, we move into PFAS world, if we sample for that, and yes, we do. We've been fortunate, one of the only communities that does not have any PFAS at this time under the current regulation. In addition to those contaminants, we're, we're constantly sampling for bacteria throughout the season, so 25 in the peak season, April through September, and we sample four in the off-peak season. Our staff has done a fantastic job over the past several years, and we've been awarded some public water system awards. The one this past year is, there's no photo of that one up here, but we, we've consistently been recognized by DEP for compliance and, you know, doing our due diligence and going above and beyond. So we're proud of that and like to at least. So we're proud of that and like to at least show these off. Slight delay. I'm changing that slide for some reason. There we go. We'll get into the inter municipal agreement now. So Province Town and Truro have an, an inter municipal agreement, also known as an I M A for short. The first I M A was dated August 17th, 1982. And this latest version was April 10th, 2010. Per the Acts of 2010, chapter 364. There's an I M A in place between the two towns and Truro has three members on the water and sewer board entitled to vote when the board is exercising powers of a water board. So that was, that was something in these acts that was included and in the I M A that for the first time, the town of Truro had representation on the water and sewer board. This is section six of that I M A that says when the water and sewer board of the town of Province Town is exercising powers of a water board and appointments have been made by the selectmen of the town of Truro in accordance with section two, a quorum shall be four members. This I M A agreement outlines several terms and conditions which were agreed upon at that time. The first bullet is that Province Town agrees it will not increase land area beyond that existing in 1981. By eminent domain powers exercised in 1907 and 1952 without prior approval of the board, Truro Board of Selectmen. Further, Province Town will not sink additional wells in its present sites. Truro agrees that they will actively support and cooperate with respect to planning and long range water supply. There's another article in there that outlines that Truro agrees they shall not introduce any form of legislation or action that would restrict the taking of water within the town of Truro by Province Town as long as this agreement remains in effect. Or unless Truro is able to demonstrate that the taking of water from Truro by Province Town is detrimental to the town. Within the I M A, there is a couple major deliverables that are outlined that should be jointly developed. One of which is a water system master plan and a watershed management plan. There was a water system master plan developed in 2002. A small update to that plan was done in 2017, which incorporated mainly long-term capital planning, 10-year capital outlook for the water system and water department. We did not do any demand forecasting at that time. In that latest update, the watershed management plan, there was a draft plan once upon a time in, in the late 2000s. Funded by the Cape Cod Commission. It was never put into motion as a, as a final plan. So as part of what we would like to do, we have filed a one-stop grant to assist with funding and developing and updating both of these plans. And obviously if we're, we're favorable, we would come before the boards and, and hope that you would agree to accept the grant. This grant was filed, I believe it was for 350,000. That's the price that we believe it's going to take to update these plans where they need to be. As shown in a previous slide. This is our actual number of accounts as of today is 4,097 total. With Province Town having 3,567 and Truro at 530. So these are billable accounts. These are metered accounts. So obviously one parcel could have more than one meter on the parcel if it's a multifamily or condominium setup, but this is how the numbers currently shake out in our billing system. We are an enterprise fund operation. So we are separate accounting mechanism from the, the general fund of the town of Province Town. So user rate fees fund our operation in full. The gallons by town, we've shown this on, on several joint meetings before with how we shake out. Essentially Truro last year fiscal year 24 had 20.5 million gallons of billable water. And Province Town was 156.2 million gallons. And when we equate that to dollars, not looking at the base fee or any other charges strictly usage fees. That equates to 1.275 million in Province Town and 179,000, let's, let's call it in Truro. Thought we'd show another slide on the water and sewer board and dive a little deeper into that board. So again, seven member board, one alternate member. Four regular members are from Province Town. Three appointments from Truro and one alternate from Province Town. The members of the water and sewer board are appointed by their respective select board. The mission statement of the board is responsible for governing both Province Town water system regulations and sewer system regulations for establishing rates and fees and modifying rates and fees associated with the water system and sewer system. And evaluating current and future demand impacts on both the water and sewer systems and adapting master planning as necessary. This is the current appointments on the board. They are held the second Thursday of each month unless otherwise noted in the Veterans Memorial Community Center in Province Town. We have members here tonight as, as you noted, but the chair is Bob O'Malley. Courtney Warren from Truro is vice chair. Larry Black from Province Town, Austin Knight from Province Town, Nancy Madoff from Truro. Tracy Rose is a Truro appointment. Jonathan Sineko from Province Town and Steve Ficella is our alternate member from Province Town. Over the course of the last 12 months or so, we've been working with a working group. We formed a working group, I should say, which the members introduced themselves earlier tonight. The Joint Water Resource Working Group consists of the staff members listed from both towns. And we've been meeting on a regular basis to discuss these very topics before you tonight. Pretty much covered these bullet points. We're working, we were focused on specific tasks necessary to begin planning for additional supply and expansion efforts. When we look at those planning, long, long-term planning and, and future expansion. Sustaining the current system requires developing operational redundancy. When North Union Field was placed in service, that was intended to be a redundant supply. And in our last demand forecast update, which we included Truro's numbers. We know that it's not operating as a redundant supply. If we take a primary source out of service in the peak season. We can't meet peak demands. So as we move forward, our, as we state here, we need additional supply to support both communities growth. This is actually a typo. It's 600,000 a day for Province Town. And it was 120, I believe for Truro. So it was 700,000 a day for both communities. Province Town Select Board has not allocated any new gallons and housing categories except affordable housing under its current growth management by law for the past two years. Staff prepares a growth management report every year. And as part of that process, staff makes recommendations to the select board. And for the past two years, we've recommended pausing any new allocations as we get through our demand forecasting. So this is what we look like on an average day. This slide intends to represent all of our sources online with the exception of the air force base. On an average day, we're able to meet demand to all the homes and businesses. And we're also putting some water in the tanks, hopefully, or maintaining tank level. But on a peak day, one of the maximum days that we have with everything pumping, we're strictly meeting demand. Probably taking some water from storage. And if one of these is out of service, you can imagine that that just puts us in a situation that we're taking more out of storage. And now we're in a tough spot to meet demand. And would take several days to recover. So as we look at the future coordinated efforts, this table was, not sure how visible this is on the screen. But we've outlined several tasks here with the scope of each task and a projected cost and timeline. So when we look at an additional source, we're, we're looking to model an additional source in Truro. And figure out if it's feasible or not and what that impact might be to the current North Union Field site. Is it, is it even possible to sink another well hypothetically in close proximity to our North Union site? We don't know that without future modeling. The water and sewer board did vote 500 to move ahead with that project. We have not begun, but it is something that we're looking to do. It is a cost of approximately 20,000 to run a very simple model. There would be a peer review by the town of Truro. To vet what our findings are. The master plan and watershed plan, as I mentioned, we have filed a one-stop grant between 350 to 400,000 is what we feel is necessary to complete these, these reports and get these finalized. Again, another peer review by Truro. And then finally, once we gather all of this information. We would enter into an alternative analysis. In other words, we would take, is it possible to have another groundwater supply? If not, what, what from that point do we do? Do we start looking at reactivating N T A F B wells? Do we look at regional desal plant or what are our options for a future source supply? That process we expect would be approximately 250 to 350,000 within 18 to 24 month turnaround. This is a timeline chart that shows all of those tasks outlined by year. And in red is projected joint meetings, the joint meeting process. So you can see the alternative analysis, we're, we're pushed out to mid 2026 based on the current timeframe and finishing up sometime in 2027. And we expect the master plan would be wrapped up early 2026. This is a slide to show potential topics of joint select board meetings. Again, 2024, review and approve the current plan and meeting dates.
Sorry, Cody, the, no, the audio just went out for those of us online. We can hear you in the room, but not through the Zoom.
Test, test, test.
That's great. Thanks.
Sure. Not sure where that cut out.
You're somewhere in 2025 to 2026, I think.
Yep. So 2025, spring and fall, we would, we would begin draft changes to the I M A for review. In the fall, we would review the draft update on the master plan and watershed management plan. 2026 further I M A discussions. An update on the alternative analysis late fall of 2026 and again in 27. Begin the, or finish up the alternative analysis and start having some meat for D E P to review. So we started to look at this from a capital needs planning point of view. When we can outline this in fiscal years and those associated costs. Again, alternative supply 250,000, we believe could be accomplished in fiscal year 27. The engineering analysis, tank selection site in Truro. I know there has been some work done on that front, so we believe that could move ahead in 2026. The construction of an elevated tank. The estimate that Truro received was 9 million. And we believe that could be fiscal year 27 and 28. And we did put a, the caveat on here that we want to remind folks that this doesn't increase any capacity on the system, but it does solve fire flow deficiencies in North Truro and stabilize system pressures. Engineering and permitting and construction of additional groundwater source is TBD. Pending much of the modeling and outcomes of those studies. Approximately 5 million and then the engineering and construction of the distribution system expansion would be 5 million. That's all I have. Open for questions.
And specifically questions from select board members. To start clarifying questions. Cody, don't go too far, just in case the slides need to come up again for a little bit of help.
I'm going to ask if there are any questions from the Truro Select Board.
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome again to our Province Town colleagues and the water and sewer board and members of the public. A couple of clarifying questions. This is a lot to process. I know many of us have seen it before. So Cody, can you help me understand the storage tank that we're talking about does not increase capacity to meet demand? And right now sustaining the current system requires developing more operational redundancy. So we need to find more water is what I'm understanding, right?
Correct.
And this is the, the proposed Walsh project for Truro, which is a very important housing project. Those numbers aren't included in any of this demand.
So the demand forecast that was done both Province Town did, did their own essentially. Truro did their own, then we merged the document together. And with that being said, we, our consulting engineers came up with a number of 720,000, I believe was the number for a new source supply. Because again, we point to peak season redundancy and we need that redundancy to meet those peak demands. So the answer to that is yes, to sustain growth. What we did with our demand forecast is we took everything in our growth management pipeline that we knew were projects on the horizon that were already allocated or planned. And we projected those out to 2030 and then we projected out to 2040. I believe the number, I'm not going to speak for Jared, I think the number 1260.
Thanks, Cody. So the number that we had talked to EP about, we use the same consultant to do the demand analysis study was 250 units. And as part of that analysis, they came back and like Cody said, new water supply source, storage tank as well. And like Cody said a little earlier during his peak season, if they do have a tank go down, then it is a little harder to have emergency supply from that tank. So the tank benefits a little bit, both communities. Truro does benefit the most from the tank as far as fire flow and pressure. While Province Town will also have another emergency supply source a little bit for the summertime.
So if I could just clarify Jared, so was the Walsh property included in the demand forecast?
Yes, Walsh is part of that number. Absolutely. Yes, Walsh is part of that number. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the, the tank, the tanks and how that works is there's still a little bit of study that needs to be done because we know that the elevation in Truro is higher. The tank is going to be higher than our existing tank. So this would likely become a different pressure zone for the system. And we would, we would be able to have, we would realize during peak hours, peak days, we likely would be able to draw from that tank during those peak hours and peak days. But it does not add any capacity to the system in terms of pumping capacity.
Any other questions from the Truro Board members?
And in particular, clarifying questions, and then you'll probably get to some of the deeper ambiguities going forward. Other clarifying questions?
This is Sue Gerard Erwin from Truro Select Board. I just have a question. When you talk about the Air Force Base, the number four and number five, that they have not been used in 11 years, what is, is any, what if anything is being done to assure they're still useful wells?
Yeah, good question. What I meant by that, I should have clarified was we haven't, we haven't put those into the system in 11 years. We're still maintaining those. As a matter of fact, we, we redeveloped well number five this year. Actually, we replaced the pumping equipment. We didn't redevelop the actual well. We replaced the pumping equipment in number five. We still operate them routinely for testing, but they have not been into the distribution system in 11 years since North Union Field came online in 2013.
And then one, just one other question. I know the current IMA that's in place was signed in 2010 and we're just talking about these two plans in 2014. I don't like to look backwards, but what were the hurdles that got in the way? And how do you see moving forward with this, with this group that will have a positive outcome in the next three years, based on your timetable?
I can't speak for, I wasn't at the table in 2010. I was with the department, but I wasn't at the table negotiating the IMA. That was the two select boards at the time heavily negotiating that. So I can't, I can't speak to the hurdles. I know that, you know, we, we did lease the land in Truro. Truro was not willing to sell us the parcel. So Province Town did enter into a 99-year lease at North Union Field. We do not own that land. We did purchase privately the zone one parcel, that radius parcel that we saw on the map. But we did enter into a 99-year lease agreement.
I'm going to turn it over Leslie to you and your board if they have questions for Cody.
Thank you, Bob. Gentlemen, Austin, do you want to start? Do you have any questions?
Austin Miller, Province Town Select Board. I was wondering if you could, first of all, thank you for the comprehensive presentation, really helpful in framing the, the background and issues. I was wondering if you could provide a little bit more context around the North Truro Air Force Base well field in terms of, you know, what are the parameters for its use as an emergency source and what's preventing it from being used, for example, as redundant source?
Good question. So it is still registered to Province Town. We have those wells registered to Province Town for emergency use. So DEP recognizes that those are available as an emergency supply. That's why we do routinely test those and they're available for service. In terms of redundancy, it is not a fully redundant supply because we were permitted for 334,000 gallons a day out of that site. So we're about halfway there in theory. The other caveat, I think you're alluding to a more routine basis of using those wells. It's something that we would need to enter into conversations with the National Park about. But not only that, we would need to investigate if it was a routine basis, also further modeling there because well number five is actually quite close to the ocean and there isn't a lot of data on saltwater intrusion at that site either. So that's something that we would want to model so we can see if we were pumping these on a more routine basis again, how is that saltwater interface behaving? If that answers any of your question, they are available for emergency supply currently.
Thank you. Yeah, that does answer my question. To your point about conversations with the National Park Service, have there been any conversations with them about that source or others? Or is it generally just known that it's not something that they're amenable to?
So we have an active MOU with the Park Service that will be renegotiated shortly. And that's something that we would need to bring up to the seashore. I will say that in the past, those were very, very, it, it's a difficult site because it does fall on federal land. The federal government views any taking of water as mining a resource. So it's, it was very difficult. Province Town many, many years ago, 35, 40 years ago, tried to actually acquire those wells. But because of that fact with the, with the Federal Land Act, it's a stumbling block. So there may be an arrangement that we could modify and routinely pump. But again, there's more studies that also have to be done there.
Eric?
Hi, Eric Borg. Cody, there was a mention in here about a regional desalination facility. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to what the feasibility or the challenges associated with that path would be, just so that we know kind of how much space to save for that possibility as we go about this process.
So years ago, long before my time, when Province Town was planning for the North Union Site, what became the North Union Site, an additional groundwater source, D cell was looked at and considered. At that time, I don't think there was any plants, to be honest, in Massachusetts that were operating a desalination plant. The, the hurdles there, regulatory hurdles are very steep. The state doesn't favor brine disposal. It's not out of the realm of possibility, but it's something that we would need to begin conversations with DEP on. These are very, these plants are, take time to permit, you know? And there's an extensive amount of engineering that goes into, to these plants. So the reality is it's on the table in terms of long-term planning, but there is, I don't want to make it known that this is an easy thing, just retrofit the plant to D cell. You know, there's a lot of stumbling blocks.
Can you speak to, let's say, take all of the challenges and the costs out, outside of this? Would a desalination plant, how would that compare to, let's say, a new well in terms of what it can, what it could pull?
Yeah, again, I, I can't answer that because there's so many variables that would go into, where would the, where would the feed water be? Would it be in the bay? Would it be brackish water pumping from a groundwater supply? And DEPs, be heavy engineering studies to be done to figure out how much could be taken? Where is the waste product being disposed of?
Okay, thank you.
Cody, thank you. I've got a question or two, just to follow up on the, on the North Air Force Base, Cody and everyone. I think if you wouldn't, I think it would be a good idea to just have a conversation with the National Seashore to see if they'll be open to that. Doesn't hurt to ask. I think that if they're willing to expand, that might be helpful in the short term overlooking at things. And so that would, if you would consider that, that would be, be grateful for that. And then they covered, you covered desalinization. I do know that they do that down in Sanibel Island, doing it for years, Florida. And the water tastes pretty good there. So, but I understand the cost factor with that. You have here on the coordinated planning and future expansion slide on 2025, it says reviewed draft changes from the working group and consider adding wastewater to the IMA. Where exactly would that wastewater be? Would that be on beach shore in Truro? Cause I know that's been discussed and I happen to think it's a good idea, so, but.
Yeah, yeah, let me speak to that. Truro is exploring the possibility of connecting a beach point to the Province Town wastewater treatment system. And so there's very preliminary discussions, but if we're reworking the IMA, it makes sense to do the water in the sewer at the same time. But that, that was why we added that.
I agree with that. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I was identifying the right wastewater. So that's all I have. Thank you at this time.
So does that rest clarifying questions from the presentation? If you're ready to transition, we can move into discussion.
Just one more question, please. So regarding this, Sue Gerard Erwin, regarding the Air Force Base wells, the, the testing that you're talking about, that you do on the active, on the active wells, do you continue to do that type of monitoring as well? Both the bacterial samples as well as the chemical analysis?
The bacteria sampling, yes, routinely those samples are collected monthly. Again, to ensure they're available for service. We did include those in a sampling round for PFAS. That was a grant funded preliminary round by DEP of three years ago. Those were, were clean of PFAS essentially. There was no detections there. In terms of the other contaminant list that you saw tonight, those are not included on our routine sampling because they're not in the system. So we're not required to sample those on a routine basis. They're not on our sampling plan because they're not entering the system. Should they enter the system, they'd be required to start those sampling processes again.
Would, would that be useful since it's kind of what's on the table as a possibility that you would require that testing before getting too far down the rabbit hole with it?
I think we would, we, we have enough data at least on, on the contaminant testing to know that it's fine since we've operated those wells for so many years. The bacteriological sampling is what we want to definitely continue doing so they're available for service. And then if, if it's going to be a routine operation, we would need to include those in our, our DEP sampling schedule.
May I have a follow-up to my colleague's Truro's question? Cody, don't we use that every once in a while during peak season, the North Truro Air Force Base? We don't use it at all?
Not in 11 years.
Okay. Just wanted to double check on that. Thank you.
And Cody, could you clarify that the maximum withdrawal of those wells is 300 gallons per day? Is that correct? So it wouldn't meet?
334,000 gallons a day. Yep. So it's about half of the source that we would need to look for to sustain growth projections.
Okay, I am preparing to shift gears then, not seeing a lot of visual cues and not hearing any audio cues. Cody, is there anything you wanted to say in closing?
No, I think, you know, we look forward to the process and prepare for answers.
Prepare for answers and more questions and more answers. Yeah. Cody, I'm, if you're all set, I'm going to ask you to take down your screen and then Kelly, I think I'll need to be able to share mine at some point here. Okay. Here's the invitation. We're moving into a period of time where you as select board members, joint select two towns. So this is a rare opportunity for you to get a glimpse of what's top of mind for each other. So I will be prioritizing select board member comments, but I also believe that there's a bit of conversation back and forth if you need bits of information clarification from staff and you're in the mix as well. So I will be tracking considerations as you raise them and sharing them on the screen. The prompt, the way that you can, you can use an audio cue is probably the easiest thing and to help manage each other in the room because you're actually mostly all in the room and not here on my screen. That's fine. I will interrupt if I am not catching what you're saying. The prompt here is what are you paying attention to or wondering about, given everything that you've just seen in the presentation and given what you know and what you walked in here probably wondering about? Remember, there'll be multiple opportunities to go over these and investigate them more in detail, but this is like collecting those questions and those categories of things to figure out. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And I'm wondering, I need, I do need to be able to see a visual of the room. I'm not quite sure how that's gonna, there you go. Thank you so much. It's as simple as a shared word doc. If you see me typing something or miscategorizing something that you've said, I'm hoping that you're going to. Let me know. What you see here is just one of those questions that had that sort of ambiguous pieces to it that Cody wouldn't necessarily be able to answer and quick clarifying question, but you might be wondering, what are the hurdles or challenges to updating the IMA and how to address those proactively now? Leslie, I think you may have had an item up here as well. You had some questions about the Air Force Base Pump. If there's something you'd like me to put on this list for that, let me know.
Thank you, Jennifer. If we could, the question I had is could we have a conversation with the National Seashore to see if the amount of gallons that we currently have pumping or available could be expanded?
And that's the Air Force Base Pump?
We call it the North Truro Air Force Base Well Pump.
Ask a clarifying question here?
Yes, please.
As a follow-up to, to this question. So it's my understanding that the North Truro Air Force Base Wells are for emergency only, for lack of a better term? Is that true?
Correct.
So the question is, can we use them not for emergency only, right?
Well, Nancy, it's a, thank you for that question. What I'm looking for is to see if this is a source that's available that could be doubled in its output.
Okay.
That takes some of the pressure off of all of us to get, in other words, to get, to build a well.
Yep.
It's going to take a long time.
Right.
If we could find something right now where we could have more capacity, that could possibly help with some of the things as towns we're trying to do. So that's where I was going. In other words, it may not be the total answer to it because we'll still need redundancy, but it might, maybe half of it could be used for the towns and half of it could be redundancy or emergency. I don't know how you, how you can divide that up, but I'm just thinking along those lines is if there's something in the short term that we could actually increase the capacity, that may help us out as we're going to look at a long-term solution. Does that make sense?
It does. I think we're, I think, I think we're saying the same, asking the same thing. Yep. Great. That's awesome. Thank you.
How about others? What are you paying attention to, concerned about, wondering about?
Yes, this is us. The other comment tying into that is to make sure when, you know, sometimes there's usage and if it says emergency usage, you can't use it for anything else. So it's really seeing what the agreement is between the national, the services.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a hard no, but unless we ask, we're not going to know. And I just feel that we should at least ask, Cody, do you want to clarify in case I'm going down the wrong path?
So I believe those were included in, that's included in a Water Management Act registration. So any increased withdrawal capacity would fall under a Water Management Act permit. Those would likely need to be re-permit, they need to be a permitted source.
And where would that permit come from? Would it come?
Mass DEV.
Okay.
And that would be, I'm not prepared to answer that process tonight.
Of course not. That's not, just if we could look at it and then know that that's what we'd have to do. If there is capacity, then the next thing we'd have to do is also talk to DEP. So there's a couple of steps. If it's, they may say no, but I just, again, we're just.
Yep. Just gathering the questions right now. Okay. Other questions? I can build on this one or it can be another topic? What are you paying attention to, wondering about, concerned about, hoping for?
I have a, Bob Weinstein from Truro. I have a question, Cody. First of all, I want to thank you. This is not my first time listening to you. You've been very clear as you have in the past. You've been very clear as you have in the past. I'm wondering about how Truro and Provincetown, particularly Truro, as we approach build out, there's a known quantity of still developable land in Truro. How do you interface that with the projections? I think I heard you say there were projections going out 30 or 40 years in terms of mapping usage. And I want to know how both communities can pay attention to what the usage demands will be with known build out figures. And I would appreciate being able to see that visually, how both communities, as I said, in Truro, there are a known number of developable lots still existent. And I don't know how Provincetown quantifies that.
So that goes back, I think I would point back to our growth management process. Provincetown has a very intricate growth management bylaw where we track and allocate water and sewer gallons. So that is how for the Provincetown portion of the demand forecast, I want to be clear that we focused on our known projects in the pipeline and what we had allocated through 2030. And we did take a look at beyond into 2040 as some of those could come online. Truro's demand forecast was based solely on 260 dwelling units. Once we merge those together, I just wanted to be clear that the demand for Provincetown, 600,000 a day, 720,000 a day when we merge both communities together. But I think one of the ways I think Truro should do that is probably maybe a similar process is tracking and, you know, a growth management process. You know, as complicated as it is for us staff members to digest, it is a mechanism that we can track projects in assigned associated capacity.
May, could I, forgive me for interrupting, may I do a follow up on that for clarification, Bob? Would that be all right?
Sure.
Cody, just to make it clear, the 720, 720,000 gallons that we were talking about, that's for capacity that we don't currently have, correct?
That is the number that, that our consulting engineers came up with for both communities to seek a source that will act as a redundant supply.
Got it.
Meet our growth for the future.
Yeah. So right now, the, there's a couple housing projects that Provincetown is already covered. And, and so that would be the BFW that's being built right now.
Right, again, we, we looked at everything that we had through 2030 in the pipeline.
Right, but I guess, forgive me, but I just wanted to make sure that those are things, you've looked at the things that the town meeting has, it's already gone to town meeting and it's been appropriated and it's, it's being built. So it's, it's happening. It's not, and so wanted to make clear, unfortunately, it sounds like for the Walsh property, that would be the 720,000. The, the amount of gallons does not currently exist for, per gallons for the Walsh property, is that?
We did not incorporate the Walsh property into Provincetown's demand forecasts.
Of course not, because it's Truro, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that, I guess I would ask Darren, is Darren, when you, when you guys talked about your, your amount that you were looking for per gallons, I know that you have a non-binding resolution that has been passed for the units, which is wonderful to hear. It's fantastic. Does your projections, do they include the Walsh property?
I don't think, this is not a subject that I think we're prepared to, to, to put any definitive answer on today. There's still, this is going to be a part of the IMA conversation, the future IMA conversation. So I think this is an area where we, we'd not prepared to have, have a more public conversation on right now.
Can I just clarify, please? Because I didn't, I just asked if Walsh was included.
Yeah.
Right?
It is part of, but that's not what, that's not what Leslie's asked.
No, it's, I'm asking, I'm looking to clarify to make sure that, because I'm under the understanding that, I mean, for Provincetown, we included housing projects that are already, I mean, we're paying for them. We've got the shovels in the ground, they're being built. I just wanted to, to double check that for what you, where Walsh property is because it's, you know, it's wonderful that it's going to happen, but I think you still have to move it through town meeting that right now as it stands for what Truro asked for, for their protect, projections, was the Walsh property included in that? That's all, and I think that's because you're thinking now and I'm wondering if it's later. So we don't know where the Walsh property fits. Fair to say, Nancy?
Right, so Jared, is Walsh, was Walsh included in the demand forecasting for Truro as part of the joint forecasting for Provincetown and Truro?
Yes, it was, and we did that 18 months ago, I think. So yes.
That's for future use then.
No, what, what you're, I think what we're speaking about, what is the existing capacity to meet this demand? That's.
No, I'm not.
I, I know what you're saying, Leslie.
So Darren, just to be clear, and I'd like to finish.
Yeah.
I'm asking about the 720,000 gallons. And, and that's what I'm trying to find out. It's like what I heard is that currently what we have already being built has been included in what we have right now. Other things that we have will probably have to be part of the future. And I was just wondering, because the Walsh property is important and you're, you are, you have, you're habit through going through the, your town to make sure that you get it. Is that part of the, is it part of what's currently the gallons that are, are they part of the allocation at this time? And I'm getting a confusing answer. It's like, it sounds to me, I thought they were part of the 120,000 going forward for Truro? I'm just trying to understand where Walsh fits because we want Walsh to fit. I just want to know where. And I think Nancy, you feel that you're this, feel the same way, if I may?
Uh, yeah, I thought based on Jared's response that it was, so.
I think there might.
This is.
And we need to talk about it tonight.
Yeah, no, this isn't something that we're going to, Darren, wait for the future. I think Nancy, we need to talk about this.
Well, this, this is, if I can, this is an area where I think Provincetown and, and Truro disagree. So that's where I, this, this, this is a part of a.
I, I, I can't, no.
Yeah. I.
Well, let me, let me see if I can do a little bit of the heavy lifting here for just a moment. The one piece, a piece of work that you might meaningfully be able to really focus on is articulating what those questions are that you're carrying forward, even if there's not an agreement about those things. So disagreeing is okay. Trying to figure out what are the questions that you're carrying forward might be where your work is tonight? I think I'm understanding it in a much more simplified way than all of you in the room are, so maybe you can help me out. I'm thinking the question that I keep hearing is, do the demand projections include the Walsh property? And there's this difference between known build out figures, things that are already appropriated versus future developmental lots or potential that are not yet appropriated. Is that the distinction here?
Here's to be, I mean, I don't want to speak for Nancy.
Okay.
I think, I think there's some confusion with the way the demand forecast.
Yes.
The demand forecast for Provincetown, again, looked at through 2030, all of the projects that were either already approved or slated to come online through 2030. We took those numbers, which was 13 million gallons. Then we looked at them through 2040, which was 8 million gallons because we know that we have some known projects coming online through 2030 and it starts to taper according to, to the projections through growth management. I think the issue is where the disconnect possibly is that we didn't factor those into our growth management process, those gallons for Walsh.
I, that's, that's why I'm asking Truro. I would assume that Provincetown would work on Provincetown's projections and Truro would work on Truro's projections. So I just, that's why, and Nancy was asking the same thing, that's all. I mean, I don't think it's fair for us to, I mean, we should obviously talk about it because it's a joint, the gallons are joint, but the idea is, is that where do they land? Where does, I guess, well Nancy, you have the question about Walsh. It's like, where does it stand right now?
My understanding is that in the projection numbers, the, the demand projections that the Walsh property is accounted for. And I'm going to go with yes, because Jared very patiently answered the question, I think twice, maybe three times. So are, is Walsh included in that demand forecast?
Of the 720,000, right? Yes.
Yeah, can I, can I, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking, Nancy. So I think the, the problem is we've got a demand analysis that happened for Provincetown, demand analysis that happened for Truro. And then we are, the stat, at a staff level, we're also talking about that existing capacity and how that's going to be allocated for all of the demands that happened in these two kind of simultaneous processes, if you will. Am I getting that right, Emily and Jared and Cody and Vince? So Jim, sorry. So I think that's where you're getting kind of confusing answers is that we're talking about two different analyses that were performed. But then our staff has been talking pretty intently about, at a staff level with Provincetown staff about how the existing capacity gets used. And so we're trying to decipher which are you looking at? Are you trying to figure out what the, how that existing, how the existing capacity gets used? Or are you asking about what we're forecasting for, you know, when we finally build out some wells in 2032? Is that our projected date?
I think what I'm trying to ask is, do we feel confident that we will be able to produce, find, clean and deliver water for the Walsh property? I think that's the question really is what, is what I'm asking.
Yep.
And I think that's a question that a lot of people need and are asking.
Something you're paying attention to or, or wondering about is where in this process do you really take a reality, like a, a full, very thoughtful look at Walsh property and reality touch the options are and whether you can meet them?
Yeah, that's a great way to summarize it, thank you.
But you don't see that quite up here yet, do you?
Jennifer?
Yep.
Leslie Sandberg, I see Tracy Rose from the Water and Sewer Commission would like to speak. She's got her hand up.
Tracy, go ahead. Are you online?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Talk closely. Hello, Tracy Rose, Water and Sewer Board for Provincetown, but I'm the Truro representative. And I would just like to add a comment to the conversation that's going on. So like Provincetown, they had projects in the pipeline that they used in their projections. And I believe that for the Walsh property, for Truro, that was already in the pipeline as well. So it's my understanding that yes, those, that, that needed capacity is included. So that actually, hopefully, very soon, we can move, continue to move along with the project. So I just wanted to add that, is that correct? Kelly and Dan?
May I? Tracy, forgive me. My town manager, Alex Morse, would like to say something that may be appropriate in an answer to your question, if that would be okay?
It's totally okay, are you, go ahead.
Yep. So I think just to clarify, so the forecast of 720,000 gallons per day demand is both towns' future demands put together, hence why we're here today and the importance of this for our future development goals. If we didn't undergo a planning process and didn't add additional capacity, there isn't sufficient water to accomplish building on the Walsh property now. So if we didn't explore or build future capacity, we wouldn't have enough gallons to support the entire development at the Walsh property, given all of the other projects in the pipeline in Provincetown that are already either approved or in our analysis through 2030. Does that mean that the project's impossible to accomplish? No, it's possible that there are sufficient gallons and a conversation happens between the two towns where there may be certain categories that have additional gallons that aren't being used and we can have a conversation about, or the select board could have a conversation about transferring some of those gallons to have a more staged development at the, at the Walsh site. But if you were to say, we don't have a, another water source, can we build 150 units or 200 units at the Walsh site? The answer would be no, we'd have to figure out a process to identify those gallons from the existing capacity. So again, both Provincetown and Truro have needs and, you know, growth projections that just won't be supported by the existing capacity. So I just want to clarify, clarify that.
Jennifer, that's Sue again. So just back to the whole, what, what are we accounting for? So it's very clear that Provincetown has 600,000 gallons accounted for in, based on their growth reports. And somewhere along the line is 120,000 from Truro. But if we could just maybe identify where that's coming from. If I look back into some conversations in 2022, where you had 200 units projected at that time for the Walsh property, we're looking at 33 gallons per day. And the Cloverleaf, which had 40 units, you were looking at 6.6,000 per day. And so that comes out, I think it was estimated like 84,000. So is, is that 84,000? There has to be somewhere that 120,000 came from that we're projecting. So we, the town of Truro is projecting a growth of 120 gallons needed. It's more of where, what is that, where did that 120 come from? And we might be covered, but we don't know because we don't have the answer. I don't, it's, but wherever the 120 came from.
I think, I think the only confusing part without having slides, I think this is probably going to have to be a little deeper conversation in the future because we need to show the annual water use that Truro projected through 2030 was 9.3 million a year. And in Cloverleaf, the Water and Sewer Board approved that in 2019, I believe. That was projected to be 1.4 million gallons annually. The 20 through 2040, the, the Truro use was 11.6 million gallons. So it's about 20 million gallons, 21 million gallons, total capacity needed based on the 260 dwelling units. And there's calculations behind the scenes that go on. And it was about the same for Provincetown, 21 million gallons annually. 13 million, we know, are coming online through 2030. And I also want to be clear that Provincetown is not projecting exceeding its Water Management Act permit in this duration. We still will be under our permitted withdrawals, our annual average withdrawals. Where the problem comes in is a lack of redundancy in being able to serve and sustain what we're talking about without having a true redundant supply. That's where we start looking at 600,000 a day. Oh, when Truro comes online, we need another 120,000 a day for a total withdrawal capacity of 700,000. So think of it as another North Union Field is what we need to sustain.
Some of you in the room might be able to help me out on this, but the way that I'm hearing this conversation is that you're trying to understand the numbers and estimates. It's a little hard to do in the abstract. And the reason you're trying to understand those numbers and estimates is because you're worried about the additional capacity and you want to ensure that there's redundancy and be able to figure out what the impacts are of those different options. What am I missing?
I, I'm going to take a stab at it. We have a housing, Jennifer, we have a housing crisis down here and we want to make sure that the water that is going to be produced or the water that we have helps to cover creating units. And I think that when you, when we talk about the Walsh project, that, that's a, something, that's a project that Truro is going to do. Provincetown is doing some housing too. So I think we're, we're trying to figure out how we help with our housing crisis. And that's the conversation and that's why we're asking the question about gallons. That's helpful to you.
Yep.
May I, yeah, may I ask Austin Miller for the Provincetown Select Board would like to speak?
Hello, Austin Miller, Provincetown Select Board. In terms of the Provincetown demand forecast, I know it's a little bit hot off the presses, but we did just recently go through a housing needs assessment survey which identified the number of units that we needed to create in Provincetown to address our current housing crisis. Thank you. I believe the ones that we have in the pipeline right now, if I recall correctly, only gets us about halfway there. I know Provincetown Town Meeting has time and time again expressed. I know Provincetown Town Meeting has time and time again expressed a deep desire to fully address our housing crisis. And so I want to make sure that in this process, we are ensuring that this is not a gating factor in that process. And that's really my interest here.
And that this you're talking about is that the water planning is not a negating factor in affordable housing units?
Correct.
He said correct. Sorry.
Yep, got it.
We're having trouble with the microphones here, sorry.
No, you're doing great. Thanks for swapping them back and forth. I am starting a different category around that tension between affordable housing goals and water planning that's a little separate from this question about how you interface forecasting demand with these three different pieces up above. It may not be neat and your, your working group will certainly clean these up into categories that seem to make sense when they come back to you. But in the meantime, other questions or additions you want to make to this, things that are top of mind, that you're paying attention to, concerned about?
I have a question. It's more a logistics sort of question. Stephanie Reinhart, Select Board, thank you, Cody, for your highly informative presentation. So it seems like all of this comes back to the master plan that we've been talking about. And you're applying for a one-stop grant and it's 350,000 to $400,000. If that funding source doesn't come to fruition, are there alternate funding sources that have been discussed so that it doesn't stop the time?
We are hoping to, to get an answer from one-stop shortly. And as we begin our, our budget preparation, if that falls through with a grant process, we would need to seek alternative funding.
Thank you.
And your question, Stephanie, was what would that other funding be? And is that an answerable question?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the funding, I mean, it's clear in the IMA that it's joint funding. So.
Might be town meeting bylaws?
But that's so much time.
Town meeting CIPs.
You know, that's a lot of time before, I guess you can always have a special, but you know, we're talking October, November. So if you didn't receive the funding, it would hold the process up, I believe. When do you, question mark.
Good question. When are you gonna find out? So would it be in time that we could do something at Spring Town Meeting if need be?
Yeah, we should know within a month.
Does that work, Stephanie? So it would be a CIP from both towns? Austin?
I, I think one thing that we could do is also pass a placeholder at Town Meeting, just in case the funding doesn't come through. I think we've done that in the past with, with grant, possible grant funding where it doesn't end up getting used, but the appropriation is available.
Yeah, that's what we do too, yeah. Let's all hope the grant passes.
How about those of you who haven't spoken yet? What is top of mind? What are you wondering? What are you paying attention to? And I'm asking because it's seven, we're approaching on 7:10, so encouraging not to hold back.
Jennifer, is there something that you feel that we should be looking at to ask questions about?
Do, oh, I don't have that.
I just thought I'd put you on the spot.
You can put me on the spot anytime.
No, no, I just didn't know if in some of the conversation, is there anything that we've been talking about that hasn't been clear that we should?
Yep, let's go through this list and I'm just gonna scroll very slowly because if you look through this and these are the breadcrumbs that your working group is gonna come back to. So if there are specific questions that you would like asked, please let me know so I can put them in here. And if I'm simplifying them, oversimplifying them, you get to give me the exact language. So what were the hurdles and challenges to updating the IMA since 2010 and how to address those proactively now? You had some questions around expanding pumping at the North Truro Air Force Base Pump. There are questions around how those components of, in forecasting demand in terms of current usage, known build-out figures, and then potential build-out figures. There are some questions around seeking redundant supply. I see there's a hand up. I'm just gonna ask to Joan Holt, if you can hold for just a moment. Gonna go to Select Board members first. Navigating tension between affordable housing goals and water planning, and also some questions around how to fund the master plan, planning if the one-stop grant does not come through. Anything specific? I can type fast, crew.
Jennifer, just Sue Gerard, Truro Select Board. When I go back to that table, 2025, spring and fall milestones, I think maybe capturing something on here because it's a review of draft changes from the working group and consider adding wastewater to the IMA. I think that's critical, especially with expansion. Would that be addressed?
Thank you.
Others? Select Board members?
One thing I thought of when I was looking at this is it has to do with funding, how we can figure out the, how we're gonna jointly fund the next water source. I think that's something that needs to be part of the discussion, whether we want it or not. But I think that would, yeah, that would be helpful because.
That's an IMA question, I assume?
Yes, that's what Jim's saying.
Thank you. Others? Sort of like the lightning round of questions.
This is Nancy Madoff. The only thing I would add for the working group, you have all of our support, so please be crystal clear with what you need from us. And, you know, I don't want to create any more work for anybody, but if you, however often you can update us or make sure that we're aware, we, there is not, this is incredibly important, we all agree on that. So let us know how we can continue to support your efforts and our doors are always open.
What about the Sewer and Water Commission? Do any of you have any questions or see things that we're missing? You've been on the ground doing a lot of the work. Bob, do you have any thoughts?
I think the Water and Sewer Board is really up to speed on all of this, so I think everybody here is fine. We've, we've been through this a number of times, so I think we're, we got it.
I'm gonna stop sharing for just a minute so that I can get a better view on your faces. I'm looking for a final pass from Select Board members to see if there are other things raised that you haven't gone to raise yet, because I'm preparing now to pivot to your, your public comment, so you can see what others have been thinking. So I'm gonna open it up to any Select Board member, particularly if you haven't spoken yet. Anything you're wondering, concerned about?
This is Austin, Provincetown Select Board. I just want to reiterate again from the, the Provincetown side, deep support for this process and progress and for the, the joint group who's working on this. Anything you need, let us know here for your support.
Think what I'm hearing is that the working group is gonna be putting a lot of resources together on a page, but you're asking for that two-way engagement and the request to come to you if there's something that you really need from the Select Boards, so that it's on your radar. Yep. I see some heads nodding. Okay. Other comments, Select Board members? How about the Water Sewer Board members? Is there any, do you have comments?
No, we're, we're fine. Thank you.
Yep. Town staff? So I'm gonna ask for a little bit of help from those of you in the room. Are you ready to pivot at this time to public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to be doing, at this point, I will queue up hands for people who are in the public who have a question or a comment. I'll need some help from folks online and, I mean, I can see you online. For example, Joan Holt, you've been waiting for a little while. We'll toggle back and forth between online and in the room. I will need someone to help get the folks who are in the room to that, to the microphone when it's their turn. Just to be clear, I will not be recording those comments on this sheet. This meeting is being recorded, so Select Board members, if you find that you need a written summary, we can go back to that recording and we can pull some of those ideas that come from public comment. Otherwise, I'm gonna step out from between, and other than just keeping track of time, keep my utterances to a minimum and open this up between public and Select Board members. So I see you've got at least one comment in the room and we've got Joan Holt here online. Raise your hand, virtual hand, if you are online. And if you're in the room, I need a volunteer, maybe Kelly or Jim or Emily, who can help queue up folks to the microphone. How many people do you have in the room? I'm just looking at time and trying to estimate how much time people can have.
Three hands up in the room.
Okay, good. And we've got one online. Is there anybody else online who had something they wanted to say? Okay, so there may be other parties emerging, but let's say you have a minute and a half for speaking time and as you approach the end of your time, you might hear me cut in and say you're at time. We still want you to finish that thought, but to wrap it up so that we can get to motions and votes, next meeting dates and next steps. Joan, you're first. Go ahead when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. It's great, sounds great.
I just want to make sure that all of the planning and discussions don't ignore the, in, the impact of climate. And I'm talking about drought. I'm talking about storms that would bring surges of saltwater. I'm talking about sea level rise. And those are, I think it's important that they be factored in. There's a lot of information available already about sea level rise and we're seeing the storms that are occurring everywhere. We've been very lucky, but we won't be forever. So I think it needs to be included very consciously and explicitly. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Who's in the room? Go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff Fisher, a Truro resident. A lot of talk about the, the Air Force Base wells, and I know you guys have, are working on a new MOU on that. But one of the issues, it seems like, is that they don't, they don't want you to mine the water. So you really can't take any water out of the wells if, if you're gonna use it for regular supply. But I was gonna suggest that maybe you could supplement your summer supply with that well. So use that well and then in, in the off-season, you could use your other wells to resupply and recharge the aquifer. They might be more amenable to that, to that, if you're restoring the aquifer, use the water. And I guess when, when you do meet, are you just discussing it between the, the Water and Sewer Board or, or do you update the, the Select Board on, on those meetings?
For the MOU process?
For the MOU, yeah.
So it's, it's typically with the starts at the superintendent, the park superintendent, that is, town management in Provincetown. And then we begin the process of the language in the MOU. And then from there, obviously, it has to be brought up the chain to folks in Washington and the Park Service for approval.
Okay. And then just one other comment about the Walsh property. I know you're thinking about a new well in that area too. If you could, I mean, you have your 500-foot radius of your well, so if, if you could keep it from where the proposed development is, that, you know, for whatever, when you do your analysis for, for locating the well, I'm sure you've already thought of that, but that would, that would be great. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead.
Thank you, our man of chair. My name is Jack Reimer. I'm a Truro Planning Board member, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. So I've heard it stated today that we need to find more water. I would like to know, what is the preferred site for a new source well? I have heard that the Walsh property has been identified as that source. I would like to know if there are any other sources that have been identified to this point in time. And I have a follow-up question.
You still have time. If you have, I don't know if there's capacity to answer these questions right now, Jack, but you still have time to speak if you like.
Okay. My second question is, I know that there is a condominium in North Truro that will be asking to connect to the Provincetown Public Water Supply due to contamination. I wonder, there was a joint consultant, there was a consultant used by both Truro and Provincetown to determine build-out. Did the build-out determine future potential private water supplies needing to be connected to the Provincetown Public Water Supply? What I'm saying is that there are contaminants that we didn't even know about yet. There's PFAS that has been identified throughout Truro. What I'm, what my fear is for everybody here in town is that their needs weren't figured into the, the proposed additional source numbers to satisfy growth, as I understand it, through 2030 and 2040. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Other comments? Yes, go ahead.
John Dundas, Truro resident. Thanks again to the town and the board for doing this. This is fantastic. These are my questions are directed towards the superintendent. Cody, could you give us any kind of indication on the life cycle of the current towers at 60 and 50 years old in Provincetown, the storage towers? And the mentioning of recharging, which the member of the Provincetown Select Board mentioned, the desalinization, but there's been no mention of the effluent that is being created? And is there any full-cycle recharging with, being contemplated with that? Thank you.
I don't know if those are simple answers to answer, Cody, so I'm just gonna say it's on the record unless there's something you'd like to say right now.
I can say, John, the life cycle of those towers, you know, obviously the Mount Cabo is slightly older, at 1964 when it was constructed. We are planning a rehabilitation project there. We expect to have requests for proposal release shortly to rehab that tank. We expect that we will seek Town Meeting approval for a long-term maintenance plan on that tank is the approach we're gonna, we're gonna take. It has at least one to two paint jobs left, let's say that. It's a 1964 tank. You can, you can have these in service for 100-plus years if they're maintained. That tank is actually in very good condition, the interior anyway. The exterior right now looks dirty and, you know, there is some rust bleeding down from the top. We're aware of that. We have a project planned. But probably another 30 years or so, that, that tank has probably met its life expectancy. And then the tank on Winslow Street, as I mentioned, 1976, so it won't be too terribly far, far behind, but the goal here is just to maintain the asset and get as much life out of it as possible. I'm not sure I can answer the second one. I wasn't clear on the question with the decel. What was your question related to the, the effluent?
Yeah, the reach, uh, thank you, John Dundas. It's the recycle, the full recycle of using the effluent that's being created.
Wastewater? There's a, we've, we've taken a, a very quick cursory, you know, what happens if we sent effluent back in terms of what quantity would, what volume of water would that look like recharge? We haven't dove too deep into that, to be honest. One of the concerns we have is PFAS in wastewater effluent. We know it's very, very high. And it's, it's unregulated in wastewater at this point. So any recharge, we'd have to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
I think there are at least two other comments in the room. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Paul Benson with the Provincetown Independent. I had what Jennifer called a clarifying question.
Go for it.
It had to do with the demand forecast versus the appropriated gallons. And my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the Province Post Project and the Barracks already are appropriated gallons. I would think Cloverleaf is appropriated gallons. And then more or less everything else we talk about, things like 26 Shankpinner, Nelson Avenue, the Walsh property are in the forecast bucket. But if But if that's wrong, particularly about the Barracks, Province Post or Cloverleaf, that's my question. Please let me know.
Is that an answer that anyone can provide? In a heartbeat?
Those projects, the aforementioned were included. Province Post, Barracks, and one other.
Sorry, included in the?
Cloverleaf was allocated because it was approved in 2019, so that was factored in. Obviously, that project has not been built, but it's factored in as demand.
And the Barracks and Province Post are appropriated gallons already, right? They're not in the demand forecast for Province Town.
Correct.
They're already baked in.
They're, they're baked in through the growth management process through 2030. We expect those projects will be online by 2030.
So when we talk about Province Town 600?
I was just gonna say, and Cody, can you clarify the 26 Shankpainer and 2224 Nelson, 288A Bradford Street? I think all of those are in the current existing gallons.
Correct.
Those are not in the demand forecast.
They're in the available gallons that we have now.
We have enough for those?
Yes.
Okay, so the, okay, so the demand forecast isn't?
It's for growth opportunities beyond the projects already in the pipeline that we know about.
Okay.
There's mud. Thanks, Paul. One other comment, I think. Is there anybody else in the room with a comment?
One more.
I am Rich Sullivan, resident of Truro. Just a real quick question. The 99 year lease, when does that run? When does that run out? When did that start?
We started that, I believe our first payment is in 2013. It's either 2012 or 2013, when the well site was constructed for 99 years.
Okay. There's a couple of things, as a person who has a couple of different wells in Truro now with my residences. We got the Herring River Project well underway. I don't know if that's been studied and how it might impact private dwellings, wells, as they exist today. And is there any kind of mediation plan that people have thought about? Because there could be a whole bunch of residences looking to come online to another water source if that thing goes south, so to speak. And also the Boston breakthroughs that are happening quite often. I gotta think that, just my common, just my common thought is, or my common sense thought is, that may eventually affect our wells if you're up in that payment area. The PFAS thing is, you said three years since we've tested that. Is that right? Three years?
Three years on the North Truro Air Force Base. We actually just tested that this, this year twice, January.
Twice this year?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I also own property in Boxborough and we just went through that and it was an expensive mess, I can tell you, so.
We are on.
On top of that PFAS thing, it's.
Yes, the regulation is evolving there. It's getting more and more strict. But we are on a reduced, as of right now, reduced sampling schedule, so once, we, we sample on a three year schedule, once, which is by, twice a year, January and August, in a three year schedule. After this year, we will not sample again for two years.
Rich, thank you. You're at time unless you have a, a very, very quick last comment.
Just the Herring River thing and the Boston breakthrough thing in terms of affecting private wells, is there any consideration for that at all in anything?
Province Town hasn't considered anything.
These are in Truro, I guess, is why I'm asking the question.
It is now on the radar. Thank you, Rich. So I'm looking for confirmation from those of you in the room. I don't see any hands online. Are you all, is, is public comment included in the room? This point, I will turn, my, I will still be here, but I'm gonna turn the speaking back to the co-chairs or the chairs of, and acting chairs of the select boards. You are at item seven now, motions and votes.
Bob, you need a mic?
Would you clarify the motion to vote? Somebody?
I would also like that, Bob. I don't think there.
I don't, yeah, that, I don't know.
Do you have something for the one grant? You need that? You mentioned that you were gonna have us, I mean, we're here.
That would just be if we are awarded the grant, we would need the select boards to approve the, the grant.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. That's consent, so that doesn't matter. So is there anything that? Were there any pre-made motions that you wanted to bring to our attention to vote on tonight?
The, there were two, two items really, just agreeing that the general process outlined in the PowerPoint is agreed upon to move forward. And then to agree upon a, a meeting date, if that's in February, March. Sometimes it's easier or we could wait on that, but those are the two main pieces I think we're looking for tonight. It's just to continue on.
Then, how about I try a motion? It drives my colleagues crazy because it's gonna be wordy, but I'll try to do it right. And I want you all to help me, okay? So I move that the Province Town Select Board vote to approve, approve the process outlined this evening with all the questions that were raised, that they are part of the process going forward.
Second?
I guess I should probably do a roll call. Austin Miller?
Aye.
Eric Borg?
Aye.
Leslie Samberg, aye. Passes, the motion passes. Would you like to?
I think we would adopt the same motion and I will do a roll call vote here, starting with Nancy.
Aye.
Susan. Go ahead.
So that is to incorporate the comments and questions that we raised here. Does that?
That's what I meant.
Also think it's important some, if not all of the public comments were very useful as well, so I know we.
When I, when I said comments, I meant public comments, so I apologize.
They were obviously treated differently, so I just wanna make sure those public comments were included as well.
Please, that's a great point of discussion.
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Leslie.
Bob, would you like to consider the dates? Or do we wanna, how do we wanna do this?
I would throw out February 24th.
February 24th, is that a Monday?
It's a Monday.
Monday? You, you guys can call to us? We'd love it. Monday at, you're all okay with 5:30? Is this a good night time? Staff, 5:30? Sewer Commission, 5:30? February 24th, then I'll start by saying I move to, for our next meeting date to be February 24th, which is a Monday at 5:30 and in Province Town.
Second.
Thank you. So, so moved, Austin Miller?
Aye.
Eric Borg?
Aye.
Leslie Samberg, aye. Bob, it's your turn.
I'm waiting for the town manager and assistant town manager. We're good with that.
Thank you.
Again, we will adopt your motion and I need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, that passes unanimously. That's Monday, February 23rd.
Thank you very much.
At 5:30. 24. 25.
We have to tweak, we'll just do another motion. Other than that, what's, Jennifer, what's the next step?
So the, can you hear me okay? So I am, I have the summary note. I will add what I've got from the public comment and then that gets shared with your working group and eventually through those mechanisms to all of you. And your working group carries the process forward from there. I'm gonna actually refer directly to the working group in case you have specifics about next steps, like where people can find summaries, if you wanna bring up the website, any other ways that they might wanna be in touch.
Would you like to, that to address that, Jennifer?
You know, I'm gonna go to either Jim or to Emily as my key contacts, but anyone in the working group could answer if you've got a go to person who usually responds to those kinds of coordinating details.
So Jen, we'll be updating anything we have on the joint resource on our website, on both websites. We'll also be giving monthly reports at the Water Sewer Board and regular updates for, through the town managers, through the, to the select board at our, you know, for regular meetings, so we probably will have more specific, as, as more information comes up, we'll be running stuff by you, so there's a lot of complicated pieces to this and clarifying some of these questions will be the forefront of our minds, so.
So I understand there's some scheduled opportunities for select board members to work with the working group and it sounds like there's also some of those meetings where public comment is still in the mix and that is the main interface for public between select board and meetings to interface with the working group?
Yes, correct.
Does that answer the question?
I think so, Jen.
Move to adjourn, Province Town Select Board?
Second.
And before we go, I just wanna thank everybody that came here. I wanna thank my colleagues, I wanna thank the staff of Province Town, the Water and Sewer Board. Thank you so much for all you do for us always. And also the Truro Select Board, thank you, and the Truro staff and members of the public. It meant a lot that you're here. I know we're working hard and just know that we'll get through this. So on that, Austin Miller?
Aye.
Eric Borg?
Aye.
Leslie Samberg, aye. Select Board of Province Town is adjourned.
I wanna piggyback your comments. I'm sorry to keep doing this, but it's easier than repeating myself. I would like to thank everyone present for this presentation and for the members of the public in the room and online. I think the questions were really important. I think it gets everyone thinking in a positive direction and it's better to be proactive than reactive in all of this, so I make a motion for the Truro Select Board to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'm gonna take a roll call. Nancy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And Bob, aye. Thank you all.
I move that the Province Town Water and Sewer Board adjourn. Do I have a second? There we have a motion and a second. I'll do the roll call. Robert O'Malley, yes. Nancy Madoff?
Aye, yes.
Courtney Warren? Tracy Rose? We are adjourned.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much for keeping us, keeping this whole thing together.
Thank you, Jen.